Okay, welcome to the Town of Fairfield Bond Committee Special Meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Jessica, can you lead us? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks. So today we have Matt Spurnell from Phoenix Advisors and Jessica Kennedy from Pullman Comley and our Treasurer David Cantor. And we're going to turn it over to you, Matt. Well, call to order. Item number two is to consider an act on bids received for the sale of 45,300,000 general obligation bonds and $9,250,000 worth of general obligation bonds anticipation notes. They have a motion.
Second.
Second. Okay. Matt, we're going to turn it over to you.
Okay, well, we're still setting things up now for the sale, but we have, the bond sale is starting at 11:00, where we're going to be starting to accept bids, and it'll run through 11:15. And to the extent that we get bids along the way, as the bidders put in their bid, they're going to be able to see where they rank, so they can improve their bids as we move along. And to the extent that they improve a bid in the final two minutes of the sale, that puts them in first place, it extends the sale by two more minutes. So we don't really have anything to do right this second with respect to the bids, since they don't open until 11:00. We're just going to get set up here and get it up on the screen and go from there. And then after we make that award with bond counsel's approval and the committee's action, we will turn our attention to the notes of the $9,250,000, which I believe runs from 11:30 to 11:45. So, I mean, what we're expecting today, as my computer just takes extra long to load for some reason, is a lot of bids. I mean, rates are somewhat more elevated, you know, I guess than maybe traditionally, but if we look at where the town issued bonds last year and where the 10-year treasury is, we're right about, almost at the same level. We're only about maybe 10 to 15 basis points higher. So there's been a lot of noise and a lot of things going on in the market, but we still anticipate a good number of bids and very competitive rates and historically very, sort of median historic rates from the perspective of the last 20, 25 years. So that's where we stand. I will get things up here in a moment and go from there. So just make sure I'm on your Wi-Fi, which is Fairfield Guest, which I'm on.
We are going into this with, recently with our Fitch and Moody's AAA ratings reaffirmed.
Correct. So the highest rating possible on the bonds and the notes, Moody's AAA, Fitch AAA. The equivalent on the notes would be MiG-1 from Moody's and F1+ from Fitch on the notes. So that's effectively a AAA on the notes on the bonds, which obviously gives us the best market access we could possibly want. It's a strongly rated community, kind of a flagship Fairfield County issuer in Connecticut, and a really nice size from the perspective of attracting maximum bids. You know, if you come out with a $3 million issue, you're obviously not going to attract the same kind of bids. So when we come out with something like this, we draw the attention of pretty much any bidder that would be potentially looking to buy bonds today. So we also do have a federal, an FOMC meeting today, so the market's not really expecting any surprises later on this afternoon from the perspective of a Fed, a change in the Fed funds rate. You know, I think if you went back a year, a year and a half, people would have thought rates were going to be a lot lower now, or that rates were going to get cut. We didn't necessarily believe that, but people were, you know, thinking along those lines. Hasn't come to fruition. If we get two rate cuts this year, I would be surprised. But rates, you know, kind of maintain a very normal historic average, so we should do very well today, and munis have been trading very strongly relative to treasuries, so we're in very good shape. Now I'm trying to get onto the network. Someone wants a copy of the rating report.
Sure, that would be great. Thank you. And just John Stavstrom, our bond counsel here, our partner from Pullman Comley, Tom Harris, our CFO, David Becker, our Chief Operating Officer, David Cantor, our Treasurer, and Ben Bovaro, our Budget Director, and Christine Vatali, Select Woman, Matt Spurnell from Phoenix Advisors, and Jessica Kennedy from Pullman Comley. Sorry, I'm totally blanking.
Riley Green.
Riley Green from Phoenix Advisors is here.
Is under pressure.
Yes, I know, and it's...
Forgot one of my friend's names at a meeting once. RTM. You know who that was? Thank you. I think I met you once, and it was last year in this room.
Oh, that's when I normally get to meet the clients, is after sales.
Otherwise, you'd keep me locked away in the back room.
That's it.
Yeah, right. Wherever I go, he goes.
How was your vacation?
Vacation was good. Good.
Where did you go?
To Greece.
Oh, goodness.
Jessica, you want to serve me?
No, I'm fine.
You can come sit, you can sit at the big table.
I insist.
It was good. It was, you know, it was nine days, nine days of sun and no rain and no clouds, and come home to this again, again, and again.
You didn't bring any back with you, huh?
It was really hot this weekend, right?
Is it supposed to turn the weather?
Weather was going to be sunny.
We're in Greece, where you, that's where it happens.
I was in Athens for a couple of days and then a short cruise. Crete, Patmos, Paros, and we went over to Bodrum, Turkey. It was nice. It was like the Saint-Tropez in Turkey. It's where all the Russian oligarchs keep their vats. So it was cool.
Wait, is that your daughter?
Yeah. Spent some time in the Greek Isles myself. I'd love to go back. I've been there like 20 years ago.
I was, that was 40 years ago. It's much, um, late 80s I was down.
Things seem much busier now, and we weren't even in Santorini in Mexico.
That's where I was, in Santorini, but I did it off-season, just at the end of the season, and so it was nice.
Yeah, June was still a little off-season there. I was surprised that the, you know, that some of the stuff, it wasn't really crowded. It's probably like here, as soon as the middle of June through August.
When Europe takes off for a month, that's when Greece goes crazy.
A little send-off for Bucky.
I know, he told me.
Sounds nice, yeah.
Yeah, I did it with him when I got back, so.
We had a guest appearance from Mike Freeman.
Oh, really?
By the way, on my calendar, I was like, oh, how am I going to do this? I had two events, Mike's retirement party in Hartford and a Board of Select meeting. And he called and said, guess what, I'm not retiring, for the third time in a row.
I haven't, I haven't caught up with him since I got back to find out what happened, but I assume that they had two people to take over from him, and I assume they mustn't have handled it.
I turned it, turned the job down, but in the end, at the last minute, didn't take the job, so Mike has to stay.
He was ready, he was ready to go, too.
For three, three or four years.
Well, but he really, he wanted to see that Civic Center renovation project through.
Yeah.
We worked on that with him, and he wanted to see that through and get started, so he got it, got that done, but he was definitely ready to go.
I was like, trying to think of ways to hire. He's on our Fairfield Traffic Authority.
He is?
Yeah, I think he's already gotten like three or four offers, you know.
He can do a consulting gig, for sure. Ask Bucky what he was doing. He's like, I forgot, he's on the WPCA board in Shelton. Of course, they haven't invested anything in their infrastructure there. Mark Loretty issues like $5 million of bonds every five years. He's like, I don't know how they keep the pools up, but they, it's crazy.
It's just amazing. Euro for 10 cents, tax increase. You're like, how many years did he go without a tax increase? Like 10 or something like that.
They haven't bought it since I worked at Phoenix, which is now...
Well, they, they do bonds in a little bit of a unique way.
Do these private placements that I'm not sure what they really are, so. But I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how they do what they do, but they do it.
That commercial, you know, stays is helpful.
Yeah. Well, I don't think in all honesty, I don't think they ever really, I don't think they care where their ratings, their school system is, which of course is one of the greatest jewels that Fairfield has.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think they pay that much attention to it.
I don't think we would, that we would, uh...
No. Get Christine to tell the schools. Hey, Christine. Matthew, how are you doing?
I'm doing well.
Do you finally have access to everything?
Yes, little kids, graduation.
Kind of metallics.
Yeah, I got a new laptop. I gotta leave here. Highball kids or whatever. Got a new one, so it's like the year-end stuff, and it's just, it hasn't, it hasn't stopped yet.
It never stops.
Right down low, but this, this last month, you couldn't, something, everything's gone. Yeah. So graduation, it's a Wharton banquet, athletic stuff, you know. Go, 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 go. Like every other.
I'm doing anything to spook the markets today.
Yeah.
No.
Kid bomb, kid bomb Toronto.
Tweet in one direction or the other.
Whatever. Imagine doing your foreign policy by tweets. So nice. She's such a piece of...
Just get a random person from anywhere, evade them, and they'll send a message.
I said, we're on this cruise ship, but I said to Dennis, we're gonna, I said, I have one rule for this cruise ship, but we're not putting the TV on once. We put the TV on once.
Okay.
Can't help but catch a button, but still.
For people logged in from, if people were logged, are people logged into this outside of this room?
No.
If there were, feasibly, and if they could see bids coming.
I do remember talking about that last...
Yeah.
Recorder.
I think it's just recorded, and then...
Not to the public till later, I think.
Yeah, 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 so that's fine.
Yeah.
We talked about that last year.
I remember.
I forget.
All right, we're live here.
She's already worked with Rob pretty closely. So his method is very good.
Push it right up to the files.
Bring it down. Understanding.
Caitlin, she wasn't going to dial into this.
She's not coming to...
Same. We're just questioning about people dialing in.
This is anti-fraud, so we're...
Jenny.
Are you a cyborg AI, or are you...
I am, yeah. Am I a bot?
All right, so we just, if I could interject for a sec, we are live now, so a bidder could put a bid in if they chose to right now. Typically, they, they'll wait until the end or at least the last five minutes or so to start, you know, being more active, partly because they put a bid in now, then the next person that comes in, they can start to play the game a little bit early as far as, well, who's in first, who's in second, and start to tighten things up earlier than they're ready to potentially. But also, I mean, it's a $45 million sale. If in the next 13 minutes, there's some data that comes out, there's some tweets that get posted, there's, you know, something happens in the middle, you know, whatever, that could spook the market or, you know, things in either direction, or a Fed, someone at the Fed says something before the meeting, they don't want to sit there, be sitting there with their bid that could be on the wrong end of that before they even have a chance to sell them. So, so I don't foresee us getting any real activity for at least another 10 minutes, but, you know, but we are live, so we'll see there. Again, it'll pop up, the bidder, the firm, the TIC, which is that third column from the left, which is obviously the most important as it, that's what the bid is based on, the winning bid is based on the lowest true interest cost to the town. If we were, there is some paperwork that's out there, that page that's sort of in front of bill, that has the information from, you know, current market conditions, interest rate graphs and stuff, but it has the sale results from last year on page two, and you can, if, I mean, you can see it or not, but it's this page here. And we had 17 bidders, which is, I mean, about as high as you'll ever see, and John and I have been doing this for a very, very long time. A little bit, maybe a couple more years. I've been doing this longer than I wasn't before I turned 50, so do the math, it's a long time. The Roosevelt Cross came in with a 330, basically 333 last year. David, we were talking in the hallway a little bit, the 10-year treasury is only about 15 basis points higher than it was at that point, but the yield curve has changed quite a bit from last year. So we're obviously going to see a much higher rate than 330. You know, if I were to have to pick, I think we're in the 38 ballpark now, I guess. We've had a lot of sales, and there's been a lot of activity in the market, and all the bids we've seen have been very competitive, very like indicative of a pretty stable environment with a lot of demand for the, for highly rated municipal debt in Connecticut. But that, it's, it's all kind of based on where the yield curve is. So, you know, we will probably see most of these names again today and, you know, a higher rate, but we should definitely be south of 4, and, you know, we'll see where things go. As far as the notes, we'll talk about that later, the short-term rates have actually come down quite a bit, so the yield curve is steep and somewhat since we were in the market a year ago, you know, based on the Fed cuts and expectation for Fed cuts and so on and so forth, which is really, and I'll just pop in, just reference one other chart for now, on page 12. So that is the yield curve for AAA municipal tax exempt debt. And, you know, the numbers on the left aren't as important as the direction of overall rates, and you can see a year ago, which is basically when we sold, was that green bar with the triangles there. So much higher on the short end, you can see, then the red bar, which is the current MMD curve. And of course, that, the further you go out with the debt, the more influence that's going to have on the overall interest rate, because that debt's out there longer. Of course, we're only going out 20 years, this is a 30-year curve, so we don't have to worry about that last third section on the right, but that's kind of where we are. So we're not an inverted yield curve anymore, which is nice, but rates are higher, so. There we are, about five minutes into the bid, and we're just patiently waiting. We, you know, it's not like we're going into this blind and we just say, oh, well, we hope people show up and bid. We've been in touch with a lot of these guys, we've sent them emails, they've gotten all the documents, they've seen it in the bond buyer, they've seen it on Bloomberg, and, you know, they also, we reach out to them regularly to make sure that they're aware of the bid, if they have any questions, and that kind of thing. And you could see just on this screen right here, this is just a little indication, not to say that they're all going to bid, but there's, you know, 13 bidders that are logged in and ready to go. We have, this is, this is, yeah, Bancroft. So we have Bancroft, FHN, Hilltop, Huntington, Jenny, JP Morgan, all the folks that, you know, are on that list that we looked at a little bit earlier. So we should see some good bids. You know, we've had a rising rate environment, you know, it's been a little bit choppy over the last year, obviously, but, you know, 2020, 2021, rates were at all-time lows, unrealistic, you know, long-term rates, but we issued at the lowest rates ever, we did tons of deals, tons of fundings, and then '22 rates started coming up. And at that point, we kind of thought, well, historically, when rates come up, underwriters tend to either get out of the business, consolidate, people leave, you know, retire, because there's not as many deals going on. And we really didn't see that. We've seen kind of the opposite, we've seen a lot of new players get into the, into the mix. So, you know, instead of going from, well, we used to get eight bids, now we're only getting three or four because rates are higher, which was kind of the historical way things tracked, we're, we're still in an elevated rate environment to some extent, and we're, you know, potentially going to get 10 to 15 bids on this deal. So it's obviously a good thing, the more competition, obviously, the lowest, the best price and the lowest cost to the town, so we appreciate that. And that's about all I have for right there. Now we'll just, again, kind of sit, see where things go. You know, it's, it is, it's a kind of a quiet day in the market, we have a listing of the sales that are happening in the country today on page four, and there's a handful. There's only, yeah, there's only six, you know, oftentimes this whole page is filled up, and, you know, you might have multiple sales in the same state that you're competing with. One thing I like about it is there's less competition today, so there's more eyes on this deal, because regardless of whether the Fed's meeting and what, there's still an opportunity for underwriters to come in, make a good, you know, amount of profit on this deal, it's a AAA and sell it. And sometimes in those environments, you actually do a little better than you do when there's, you know, 30 other sales or 40 other sales going on throughout the country. So we kind of, this date was kind of the day that just worked out best, I think, for everybody at this table, the town. Obviously, the holiday tomorrow, there's a lot of things going on. So that's what we're looking at, and we're, you know, expecting very good results. On the note sale side, the next page, there's about, you know, 10 or so going on, you know, nuts, crazy active, so again, a little bit more focus on Fairfield. So that's kind of where we are. If we look at page six, there's a lot of information there, I don't need to, I'm not going to read everything, but if we look at the very bottom line, that's the most recent competitive sale in Connecticut. And I'll just, it was June 10th, obviously about a week ago, Town of Windsor, you know, $5 million, it was a 10-year deal, it was a AAA from S&amp;P at a 292. It's just not a good comp, because it's a 10-year deal, we're doing a 20-year deal, it was BQ, we're not BQ, you know, we're over $10 million, so not a great comp. I think the best, even that Wilton deal that we did, you know, a week and a half prior to that, at $9 million, which was a 20-year deal, it was 20 years, but it was very front-loaded. So most of the debt was paid off, what, in the first 10-ish? Yeah, it was mainly, it basically was like a 15-year deal. It was kind of front-loaded in the front 10. So when you, you know, when you, when you front-load heavily in the first, say, 10 years, it brings down your average life, and then you're, you're pricing kind of lower down on that, that curve that we looked at, so you get a lower interest rate. So again, not a great comp. The best comp probably is that Newington deal that was 20 years, it was only $3 million, it was bank-qualified, it was a 405, but it had a little bit of debt actually pushed out further, because we had to make room for a, there was two series of bonds, and it's all, I'm not going to get into all the details there, but it was a 405. That, I think, if it was regularly priced at a, kind of a, closer to a structure like we have today, it would have probably been in the 390 ballpark. So if that was a 390, we should be somewhere in the 380s, I would think. So, and even maybe better, we'll have to see. I don't want to say that if we get a 391, that it's the worst deal of all time, I'm just saying, I, I think we're kind of in that, you know, 380 ballpark, so we shall see where...
See if you're right.
We're in the final, final, final five minutes.
All right.
And here we are.
You want to buy them?
Think of a collection, anyone have a bucket they could pass around? Actually, I will say, over the last, probably two months or so, month and a half, municipal rates have been very stable. Like they haven't, you know, currencies jump around a bit, but we're going to break the ice here. All right, so worst-case scenario, we got a 386, I'm pretty much right on the money. But I, I can assure you that that bid is not going to win. At least you know it's working now. At least you know it's working. Yeah, yeah, exactly. I feel a little nervous. Exactly. And Key Bank, just for perspective, hasn't won a lot of deals. In fact, I'm just looking at the list here, have you, have you worked with them at all? I don't remember. I mean, they bid a lot, they've been bidding... They bid a lot, so we're all, you know, we're a great, we're happy for the bid, so the more the better. But in terms of like, well, is that the firm that's, you know, really sharpened the pencil and is going to win this deal? They're just, they're, you know, they're, you know, they try to get lucky on a deal if they are able to sell some of these bonds at a good price, but I don't really see them coming in winning. Brownstone has been really aggressive lately, Raymond James, Jenny, I'm sure FHN's going to, should put in a good bid, so we'll see when those guys jump in, JP Morgan. You know, and also what, what can happen is, because of the way the platform works, if we get to like 11:14 and 59 seconds, let's say somebody does come in with a bid that's better than the prior bid, the prior first-place bid, and we get kicked out another two minutes, just because it's 11:15, it's passed, doesn't preclude a new entrant. Sometimes they like to wait until like a very, 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 very end, and then come in, drop the hammer, and hopefully, you know, they're the most aggressive and they can, so. Yeah, yeah, who knows, who knows? A few years ago, the thing went, so like 11:30, you know, the bids ended at 11:15. If nobody, you know, overtakes the winner in that last two minutes, then the bid ends at 11:15, everybody's happy, and we move on. But every once in a while, a couple bidders kind of get into a little bit of a dogfight, and that one went to like 11, I don't even know, it went like 20 minutes longer. It could go on in perpetuity, if you think about it. Fortunately, it has not ever done. Hopefully, we get out of here by dinner time, you know what I mean? Nobody wants to spend their whole day doing this, I can assure you, they don't want to do it, nobody, so...
You seem to be enjoying it, though.
I do, it's very exciting. This is our, this is the single most exciting part of the deal for, for me personally, and I've done this a thousand times, so. Fun as like the rating calls are, and as fun as closing is, you got the money, great. This is way more fun.
Closing is easy, it's always...
Oh, yeah, so one thing we're going to have to keep in mind, and like for Kate, is closing, once upon a time, was like, here's a closing memo, okay, everybody's good, boom, next Wednesday or whatever, the money comes in, that's it. Depending on who wins, okay, so Jenny just dropped one at a 372, so that's already outstanding. No, that's good, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to pick the best bid, I'm trying to be like conservative. Of the average, I'm trying to give you a nice average bid. So now Key Bank improved their bid to a 382, and they've got a long way to go, so if they're going to chip like that, then they're not going to get there. But, so for closing, because of fraud and all these kinds of fun things that we deal with now, depending on who wins, who knows what their process is going to be, but there could be a test wire sent that we have to confirm the day before, there could be a pre-closing call, there could be, who, any host of different things, so that they're 1,000% sure that, that they're going to be sending that wire to the correct place and that there's no, as a fraud prevention kind of mechanism, so. So Jenny now, you know, so Jenny's still in first, Piper came in, Bank has come down quite a bit, so they're here, they're here trying to, you know, clean it a little bit. They've got to start shrinking it down to get it all on the same screen here. Okay, there we go. Wells is in the mix. So it has been extended. Oh, yeah, yeah, so we're at, so here, this is what happens, it posts the new time here. Raymond came in at 371.
Raymond James winning that one.
They might just keep that bid there, too, they might just say, here's our best bid, we're putting it in, we're not going to screw around, you never know.
271. Oh, Jenny, Jenny just beat him again.
Yeah, let's go into the 360s, let's go. Yeah, I know, I, I don't know how far we're going to go from here, but... Yeah, yeah. Something like background music on this thing, you know, like build the... Chimes or something. Yeah. Okay, there's FHN. I've got to shrink it so we can see the, the extended time, too. So 12 bidders, yeah, which is pretty solid. Now, you know, I think we're probably just going to see improvements at this point, I would be kind of surprised if someone comes in for the first time.
Key Bank has bid eight times.
Oh, Raymond James improved to a 37, we'll call it, we'll truncate, call it a 370.
What did it do? What did he do? Yeah, Jenny popped, so now we went to, now we're at 11:18, so we just, oh, Robert
Baird just did pop in. So Robert Baird popped in for the first time, you know, that was the original, 11:16 and 14 seconds was the original extension. So maybe they just said, we're going to come in right before that extension is up, hope that we push it. Oh, Jenny, yeah, 369, there we go.
So in the secondary market, these are broken up into 1/20ths, or like, by any direction.
Well, yeah, like just show, the second, the page, the second page, you can see that. So they're all serial maturities.
Yeah.
And, you know, what, what really happens is they'll just sell those blocks to different funds in their entirety, but, you know, they might have, someone wants a million-dollar block, and then they have to figure out the other pieces, and they might have to stock some if they can't get the... some if they can't get through the, you know, through it. Because one, right now, they've like, they've probably sold, sold, when I say like sold, maybe 15 million of this, maybe 12 million of it. You know, they're, they kind of try to get ideas of where they can sell different maturities at what, at what yields and, but they're not going to, they can't spend all their time trying to spend, you know, sell all 45 million because it's just not practical and they can't do it. So they try to get indications and things before the sale and then once we make the, the award, which really happens whenever this ends, the way this platform works is it's, it's official. Like we have to approve it and all that kind of stuff, but lowest TIC, you know, if it's a conforming bid, then it just gets awarded to that, that low TIC. They'll, at that point, now try to blow through the rest of their inventory as fast as they can, particularly with a Fed meeting. And if, you know, if there's just one or two words that are different in the commentary or the, you know, the, the interview afterwards.
It's like we're not getting another extension.
Really change their potential profit on this deal. All right, so 14 bids, that's pretty good. Looks like Raymond is, is trying and they are not going to do it. So there we go. So it's automatic, it shuts it down on their side so that they can't do any more bidding or, or try anything else and it says that the auction is over and the preliminary winning bidder would be Janey Montgomery and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they're doing the re-offerings and then we'll, we're, are going to verify their bid based on the coupons and premium and then we will make the, you know, then we'll give it to, to bond council to make everything up. So it's very exciting. With Janey, like the kind of, you know, they, I did mention, they've been one, been winning and been bidding on everything, so not surprising, a good 14 bids, a 3.698629, which, you know, they improved their bid a couple basis points. Raymond did five improvements for less than a basis point. You know, so they, they came in pretty strong and they just kind of, you know, just a couple different little improvements to see if they could get it, sneak in there, but they weren't able to do it. But then you have like Mezro who put, you know, one bid in, or KeyBank alternatively put in 11 bids. So 47 total bids from 14 firms at a very strong rate and, uh, that's a, yeah. Be nice if we can get back into the, you know, the mid-3s, you know, moving forward. So with that, so you have the coupons and stuff.
Yes.
We're going to verify before we do anything.
11:45.
3.698629. 3.698629.
I know, what a white guy.
I bet.
369, right, Matt?
369, 36986.
Everybody is 369, but he rounds up to 37. Excel doesn't do us any favors, huh?
Okay. That's great.
Ex decimal place or something, so.
Got to keep that to climb in there. Superior management.
690, 62. Superior leadership.
Yes. Best bid is, like where you were highlighting.
So before I, we, we are verified at the 3.698629 by Janey Montgomery. And if you want to, you can see here, this is, so we talk about coupons and yields. So your coupons, which is what you're going to be paying interest on, is the per maturity, so 5% on the first maturity, 5% on the second maturity, so forth and so on. And then once we get down into the call area, it goes down to four. We've seen this exact bid structure for the last year and a half, almost every single bid. Difference is, as rates, you know, do come up a little bit more or what have you, we get to a point further out here where now the yields are over four, you know, comfortably over 4%, so now these 4% are kind of turning into 4 and 1/8 and 4 and 1/4 and stuff like that. So again, you know, you're paying 425 on this maturity for the 20 years, you're paying 4125 on this maturity for the 20 years, and when it adds all up and then the, the premium is accounted for, that gets us to that, that TIC of that 3.69. The yields, so these re-offering yields, is what they're expecting to sell these bonds in the market at and, which means, you know, if I'm buying that one-year maturity and I'm Vanguard, Dreyfus, what have, what have you, I'm going to be getting 2.4, I'm getting a 5% coupon, but I'm paying $102 for every $100 I buy of the bond. So it's a premium bond. You can see that even though the spreads get tighter on these 5 percenters, the premium goes up quite significantly, obviously, because now we're talking about an eight-year maturity or seven-year maturity, so the premium has a much bigger effect. So now I'm buying a 5% into 34, I'm getting a 298 and I'm buying, if I want a $10,000 block, I'm paying $11,427.50. So then when that, all that's accounted for, my actual yield is a 2.98. So they have to attest and they have to sign all these things for bond council that say, we're going to, you know, best efforts to sell at these yields in the market and that's that. So your actual premium is, well, if you look at it here, you're going to be paying $45 million, you're borrowing, you're paying $20 million back in interest over the entire period of time. Your premium is 2.152. So when you look at what your actual, we have sort of net interest is, it's 17.892 million. And that premium, you can do all kinds of things with, cause of issuance, pay some interest on it, et cetera, et cetera, but that is more bond councils around, so I'm not going to op on that right now. But it is, you know, gives you some flexibility with some things, so.
So we raised 47 and a half, not 45.
Yeah, you actually end up, yeah, when you look at your par versus premium, it ends up being 47 million and change. So, so that's that and now it's a matter of making it official and then I can call Janey, just let them know they've been awarded and sort of shift our attention over to the notes.
The committee needs to make a motion to approve the acceptance of that bid and then we can vote.
I move that we accept the Janey par bid, which was 3.69629.
Second?
Seconded.
Our seconded.
Seconded? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
698629, yeah.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. We are accepting, we have accepted the bid by Janey, 3.6962914. Yeah.
3.698629.
3.
698629.
8629.
Yeah.
Fantastic. And then next step is the.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. Yeah, it's great, great news.
Very good, very good result. I'm going to call them right now, just to let them know, even though they kind of already know, but. And they'll, they'll get an email from us, making it official and all those kinds of things that they're going to need. This is Lauren. Hey, Lauren. Matt, how you doing? Very good, thanks. Congratulations. Ah, you know, that's how we do it sometimes, that's all. Fairfield's good, it's a very active bid platform, bidding scene over here, so it's a, it makes for a good outcome, for sure. So, anyhow, you've, you're official. We've been awarded the 45,300 Fairfield bonds to Janey Montgomery at the 3.698629 and lots of good bids and we appreciate it and just want to let you know. Now everything's firm. Yep. Yeah, we'll, we'll send you the tax, the distribution list with the tax ID now and then you can reply back with the bond report and we'll send it to you and Matt, I'm assuming.
Officer Johns.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Riley has it. Yeah, yeah. Make sure he gets on everything that's Officer person. Oh, gotcha. Okay. Okay, awesome, perfect. Thank you very much, congratulations and we will be in touch. All right, Lauren, take it easy. Bye-bye. All right, everybody's happy.
Yeah, thank you.
So yeah, so we send them the email just for their files, it says it's official and then here's a distribution list and then you'll reference the fact that Qsips have already been applied for and then we'll send their tax ID number, which somebody will give us right now. Or we probably have it on file, but just to make sure, just to confirm. And then we'll ease right into the bond, other notes rather. It'll be less interesting. Oh, yeah. And here we are. This is the notes, 9.25. So to John's point, you know, it's not going to be quite as exciting, most likely, you know, it's one maturity, it's one, it's one coupon, it's nine million, it's a one-year thing. So there's not a lot of, so the note, there's not as mu, as much exposure for the underwriter. Like if they put a bid in now and rates move a little bit, well, it's a no, a few dollars here and there, rather than a 20 million, a 20-year deal that's 45 million where a few basis points in the other direction could really make a big difference on what their expected profit is and, and, you know, what their exposure is moving forward. So the bids will come in, we'll, you know, might maybe see a couple of adjustments along the way, but I don't think we're going to get 47 bids from 14 bidders. So even if we look at last year, when we did roughly the same size issue and we had the 17 bids, 17 bidders for 77 bids on the, the bonds last year, we had five bids from five firms. So everybody just puts their bid in. It's not a, they're not, you know, screwing around too much. But we, one thing we have seen, obviously, from those charts I was showing you earlier is short-term notes are lower than they were a year ago. So we were at a 357 last year and we should definitely be in the low 3s on this issue. Again, not as impactful on the budgetary perspective than a bond issue is, but still kind of nice that we have a lower, we have, looks like at least four bidders that are looking to bid, others can pop in at the last minute, but this is what we're dealing with here, so. And let's get the bidding started at 310. So, you know, low 3s, 310, 311 officially, but we'll call it 310. And, uh, and we'll just see where things go from here. Again, so if you remember the bids, the bonds, nobody came in until the last couple minutes, or a minute in, Bank of New York put their bid in and very well may go to launch right now. You know what I mean? Like, it's for them, it, nothing's going to.
Notes.
Too much of that, and that's normal, that's nothing specific to Fairfield, but that's that. In fact, if we were doing, let's just say we're doing a note issue only, we might not even do it on a platform like this. We do it like this because we're doing the bonds already, so it just makes sense and it's fine, but, you know, if it was, nine million's a pretty good size, so we would still do it electronically and we've kind of gotten out of allowing the phone call bids over the years, particularly when it's done with an official statement and a rating and it has good size. But if it was a smaller issuer where maybe we didn't do an official statement for it, they didn't get a rating, we would probably give them the option to either do it electronically or just phone the bid in. Because there are costs to them, you know, registering, putting the bid in online, and if it's a small deal, that little bit of incremental cost can actually throw the rate, you know, up a little bit more than maybe they would want, so. But in this case, this is, this works. Probably not see any extensions, probably not see a ton of changes, but that's it. So what about signing documents and all those kinds of fun things? Did we talk about that?
Yeah. So that we close on the third, we need a little gap between when we get everything signed up in the third because we have to get everything to US Bank, you know, the bonds and whatnot. So ideally, I spoke to Jennifer about it, we could do one of two things. We could set up a day where everybody's available, which tends to be a little more difficult, or I can deliver the documents to Jennifer and you have a full week and I can pick them up the following Monday, maybe drop them off this Monday, pick them up, pick them up the following Monday. It really is up to, to you guys, if you're available.
Last year, you had to come in multiple times, which wasn't very nice of you.
It's fine, I don't mind.
So, I mean, should we, is it easier just to give it to Jennifer and have people come in and sign when they have free time?
It is easier just because I think it, it gives you some leeway to come on a Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, whatever works for you.
Why don't we do that then?
As long as you know that if anybody has any questions, they can reach us.
Right, sure.
As long as we do, we do this as a signing in case people have any questions, but you all.
I'll just make sure that Betsy's available, so when I pick them up, I can go see her for sealing.
Okay.
I guess I'm a first signature too. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to her.
Can I, can I sign them on?
Yes. Yes, because now they actually accept electronics, so as long as we have a day.
Get them all week.
Yes. Monday, because I'm out for the season. Friday I'm out, so I'll make sure I deliver them on.
In Jersey.
Scott, we give them one chance on Monday. So that'll give you guys a fold.
So Monday, the 23rd?
Yes.
This race like you did the last one.
Oh, yeah, here comes Oppenheimer. It's more of a trickle, it's more of a trickle, so. Every five minutes, there we go.
Shocking. Words are all online.
Yes.
We had it, we had that on file. I always look at it.
If you're going to go away, you want someone to apologize.
Only got that. The bonds, so.
A potty train, that's part of her.
Riley, who else is on? Are there other bidders on?
Um, oh, like potential bidders?
Yeah.
I'm opening up on my screen.
Four listed below.
There's like eight minutes left. There's five potential bidders, yeah, right now. Jeffries, Bank America, Infidelity are listed below.
Get them all week.
Yes. Monday, because I'm out for a season. Friday I'm out, so I'll make sure I deliver them on Monday.
In Jersey.
That's gotta be the one, Monday. So that'll give you guys a fold.
So Monday, the 23rd?
Yes.
This race like you did the last one.
Oh, yeah, here comes Oppenheimer. It's more of a trickle, it's more of a trickle, so. 35 minutes.
Shot. All online.
Yes.
We had it, we had that on file.
It's pretty good.
I always look at it.
If you're gonna go away, you want someone to apologize. Yeah.
Only got that.
A potty trick, that's part of her...
Riley, who else is on, are there other bidders on?
Um, oh, like potential bidders?
Yeah.
I'm opening up on my screen.
Four listed below.
There's like eight minutes left. There's five potential bidders, um, we have right now. Jeffries, Bank of America, and Fidelity are listed below.
You know, before we put any PR out about this, or about the ratings, because we haven't done anything yet, you wanna review those, or?
Oh, yeah, or I could put a little, just skeletal thing together, with a couple excerpts, and, and just like the quick summary of the bids.
Okay.
The bond sold at blah, 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 this one, you know, won, same, which we've done in the past.
Right, right.
And then incorporate the ratings too, so it just kinda gives it a little bit more...
Yeah, yeah.
And then a quote or two about how, you know...
Actually, you usually get some interest, you know, from the press.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll send it, and then you guys can take it, and just tweak it, and run with it. And if you want me to review whatever you tweak, then that's fine too. Absolutely, so I'll get that, I could definitely get that to you, like, you know, for tomorrow or whatever. Because we don't, we, you know, obviously, so here's the sale date, but we haven't closed yet, so it's still relevant, you know what I'm saying? I would say get it out sooner than later, since now, once it's locked in, it's locked in, so. Oh, oh, look at this now, this, oh, hey, hey, look at this, we got another bid. Jeffries comes in at a 3029.
Excellent, excellent.
Now, okay, so Oppenheimer did make a little tweak.
Yeah.
So they went five basis points better on their second bid, and now we see, Bank of New York is gonna do anything? Jeffries is also super active in, in notes, like, they go through stretches where they win, you know, six out of eight bids, but then most recently, Oppenheimer's won, I guess, five out of the last eight. And it all depends on, like, who, who's got a customer that wants it, who's gonna be aggressive, and fill that order.
On the clock, and see what happens.
Know what we're dealing with here, so. Looks like we have almost five minutes to go. These guys are, it, it's always good too, when you see firms bidding that we've worked with numerous times, and that you know that, you know, they know you, you know them, everyone knows the process, it's, what we actually have dealt with a lot in the last, particularly, you know, year and a half or so, with all these new entrants coming from the Midwest, and the West Coast, and saying, well, we're gonna be, get more involved in Connecticut bonds, like, well, that's great, but then they, you know, they put a bid in, they just ask us for all this crazy stuff that they don't need, they don't know any, you know, they don't know any of the people, like, what do I do here, and it's a little bit of a learning curve, but, you know, we, we try to teach them well, so that...
So Matt, why is the weighted average the same as the Jeffries bid?
Uh, what are we looking at here? Right above the bids, I think that's just saying the winning bid right now, like, the current... Oh, yeah, 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 that, that's, so they're just, just showing that, and I see, that's just the winning bid right now. I don't, I don't know why they call it weighted average NIC, it's kind of a weird term. But anyways, and, so now we have TD, who has purchased a couple of the notes in Connecticut recently as well, most recently, the Darian, 49 million they bought.
TD, I don't even think they were listed before.
Oh, yeah, so they, they popped in, yep, they bought Groton, not too long ago. Piper, and, and a lot of these guys have different, you know, it applies to, to the bonds, where they have certain things that they specialize in, so Bank of America came in too, so, now I got a solid five bids, which is nice. I gotta shrink it, just to get it in. You know, we've talked to some of these folks that have, you know, the newer entrance to the market, it's like, well, they might not be bidding on a $45 million Fairfield bond, because they're more of a 10 million and under type of firm, and they specialize in bank-qualified deals, or they're more of a, you know, notes, but if it's a note, they need an OS and a rating, and some don't, you know, necessarily, so they all have their little nuances differences that they tend to specialize in, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's, you know, the more, the better. Now we've got Bank of America, you figure a firm like that wouldn't be, you know, messing around with all the, you know, updates and dealing, sitting there at the desk, and yet they've improved it by five times, so. Same amount of firms as last year, but we've had over twice the amount of bids. John, that's very exciting. 11 bids, yeah. And TD is just dying to get in there, but they're gonna, they are not gonna do, yeah. Remembering now that they can see their place, they can't see what the winning, the bid is, obviously, because that would be stupid if they weren't gonna try to win, but, so they can just kinda nibble a little bit, or you could just put your best one in, it's just different, different techniques. But so, so it's interesting here too, unlike the bonds, with a note, it's one maturity, there's one coupon, so the only thing we're really looking at is coupon and premium, that's how we generate the net interest cost. Same, it's the same thing as bonds, but there's 20 maturities, and there's a lot more going on, so you can't, it's not really an apples-to-apples thing, they are all bidding the same coupon, okay? So, which means, potentially, a lot of them could be talking to the same buyer, you know, like, they're talking, like, there's Vanguard, and I'm like, what, you want a 4%, okay, I'm willing to take $10,000. Oh, Fidelity, look at that now, oh, there we go, I was hoping to go under three, that's nice. It's a nice to see a two, it's a welcome sight. Since in COVID, we were doing notes at like a 0.2.
Five seconds, that by four seconds.
Oh my gosh, that's very exciting, that's the most exciting note bid in history. But they, but they are potentially talking with the same buyer on the other side, because there's not like a ton of firms that are buying notes, it's, it's, you know, Fidelity has, obviously has a fund, Vanguard, Dreyfus, where if, if I'm, as the, as the underwriter who's just moving that over to them, if I'm willing to take a little bit less for myself than the next firm that's talking potentially to that same person, then I'm gonna win the bid, I'm gonna fulfill the order, and everybody's, you know, they're happy with that. But what's even more interesting is, oh, look at, again, yeah, Bank of America shows up as Merrill, you know, because it's Bank of America Merrill, but, because the coupons are all the same, the only difference in the bid is premium. So if you look at the premium, it, it's just, obviously, they're giving you the highest, and second place is a little lower, and third is a little lower, and, because it's, the coupon is the same for all of them, if it was a 3% coupon versus a 5, then the numbers don't work this way. You can exactly see, like, what they would have to improve, which would be, how much more in premium would they have to give you to get that bid?
3.93.
And now they just did that, which is really surprising, like, that's, you know, I mean, a 10 basis point improvement, so, well, this has really turned out to be much more exciting than anticipated.
Yeah.
Took a little while to get rolling here, but here we go.
Get an extension again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So now, now again, the sheer...
We fly with the net though.
Between here and here, so they'd have to, you know, it's a $5,000 premium, they'd have to...
They get to a 2.4 under on the coupon, but then the premium dropped by like 30.
Who do you mind the bonds?
We haven't seen, there was two, you know, Cheshire, there was a couple twos, Darian and Cheshire in, in, in April, there was a stretch, there was like a little stretch of time there that, that...
Cheshire was like the day of, or like the tariff, the rates went up.
The bonds, three years we...
Have come down.
Rates were starting to trickle down, trickle down, you know, because everyone's expecting the Fed to cut, and, and all these things happened, and then the tariffs, and then just everything just, like, went upside down, and the market was crazy for a period of time there.
The other comparable ratings too, are, ended up issued, Darian did 49 million, so...
Yeah.
Fairfield benefited from issuing a lot of bonds, but the notes isn't as large of a department.
Yeah, true story.
Yeah, so they got a 49 million, and a 298, and were obviously better than that.
10 seconds to go, and unless Fidelity really bumps up that premium, we're good. There we go. There you go. Six bids, six bidders, 18 total bids, Jeffries with the lowest NIC, NIC is what we use for notes, not just because it's an N, it's net interest cost, it doesn't have present value, whereas a true interest cost for bonds does, because it's just one year, so it doesn't need to be, it's a much easier calculation, and they are the apparent winner, we're gonna verify at the 2.931020, pretty substantial, you know, five basis points ahead of the second place bid, which is actually kind of a lot, but we'll take that all day, and the market is probably rated about 3%, you know, 299, 306, and then a couple a little higher than that, but that's also very, very good, all verified. All verified, so we could go down, just see the best bids.
So we need a motion from the committee to accept this bid.
Yes, 293.
So I move that we accept Jeffries' bid for the, it was 9 million, 250 of notes, at a net interest cost of 2.931020.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? So we unanimously approved the Jeffries bid, NIC, lowest NIC, 2.931020, for bond anticipation note, $1,250,000. Thank you, Matt, fantastic, good news.
Congratulations, everyone, good job, you did the, you know, the right thing today.
Yeah.
Did the right thing, except...
Lot of haggling, lot of haggling.
Positive energy.
Now, you know, now it's just a process of updating the OS, and getting ready for closing, and obviously the press release, and signing, and all those things, but at least at this point, all the, all the heavy lifting is done from the perspective of the actual issue, everything's locked in, everybody's good. I'm gonna actually call these guys before I go too crazy.
See if we can have Jessica come in once, get it done, just in one visit, not that we'd all like seeing.
And then I, we'd like to be sure to make sure to say I set it up always for the official officer, and then when we go back, I'll obviously type it up, and it'll sign it again.
Matt, you ever visit the Oppenheimer people in Cheshire, Connecticut?
Oh, it's fine.
Oh, there's an officer there, yeah, I knew those.
Name Michael Gil...
I know Michael, I know him, there was a couple...
I collabed with him.
Oh, really? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's a good fallback.
Thank you.
Okay, there you go.
Very good.
Very nice.
We're starting.
Now, and, was Belichick there?
Belichick went there, yeah.
Yeah, he, he went there, right? My good buddy of mine went to Wesley.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
That's a good idea.
All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, all right, great, fantastic.